Most gracious Father, once again we come before you. We come dear God thanking you for health and strength. Thank you for watching over us throughout the days, the months, the years. We thank you for health and strength. We ask that you give us wisdom as we move forward on this island called St. Silens. Help us to move in the direction that you would have us to move, not our direction, but your direction. We ask to heavenly Father that you bless those who have come for whatever reason. We ask that you lead us, guide us, and protect us in all that we do. These blessings we ask tonight, precious name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty as its own.
Before we begin, I'd like to welcome our Braden Commissioner, Mr. Ed Meadows. Ed Meadows, he brings to us, to our commission, over thirty years' experience in land management and environmental issues. And so, we're looking forward to your input on our commission. Welcome. Right now, I'm gonna review our meeting procedures. Sir?
Can you speak up?
Okay. All right, I'm gonna blast you out. Okay. The Planning Commission, here is request for preliminary subdivision flats and site plans. The Planning Commission conducts public hearings on re-consultings, certain planning documents, and ordinance amendments. The Planning Commission makes final decisions on preliminary flats and site plans and makes recommendations to the Board of Commissions on all other items. The planning staff presents the case to the Planning Commission during the staff's report. This report elevate, evaluates how the proposal conforms to Glen County Comprehensive Plan, zoning ordinance, and other applicable regulations. Advocate shall have the opportunity to present their request to the Planning Commission. It is the responsibility of the applicant to make presentations on requests to address any conditions of factual findings with which they do not agree. Public hearings will be limited to thirty minutes for each opposing side. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allotted. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. Chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate the speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process is very much appreciated. Next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes for July nineteenth of the Island Planning Commission meeting.
So moved. Second.
Any comments or... Any comments? I have a comment, correction, I believe, on item nine, on page six. The paragraph that starts, during Mr. Hanley's PowerPoint presentation, he referred to the tree advisory boards fighting as well as a commitment letter submitted by Mr. Klein of the JWC. That was not a commitment letter. It was, in fact, an email that merely stated that the JWC had instituted a policy where they would allow individuals to come in, or corporations or whatever, to come in and present a proposal and, to them. And that really is all that was done. And I would like that email to be part of the record, and I would like the correction to say, as well as an email submitted. I'll hand this down to...
I accept the amendment.
That was mine.
Correction.
Correction. Anyone else? All in favor of approval of the minute as of record?
Abstained.
And what abstentions? Okay. Do we have any request to postpone an action, emergency additions, or changes in order of presentation?
Yes, Madam Chair, we do. The chairman has requested to reorder the agenda so that VP 3326 is heard first. We have also received requests from the applicants to defer both SVP 3306, Weber's Browner Factory, and SP 3299 Dollar General. And the commissioners need to make individual motions to respond to the requests.
Thank you. Do we need a motion then to reorder the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. Okay, so our first item will be, is a public hearing on VP 3326, 650 Ocean Boulevard. Consider Village Preservation application, the demolition of 650 Ocean Boulevard, which is at the corner of Denver Road and Ocean Boulevard. The building was built in nineteen fifty-three, and it sits on point one seven acres. The applicant reports the house is infested with fleas and mold. Its parcel IDO four dash oh four seven five one. Ann Frager, applicant for St. Silens United Methodist Church, is the owner. Is the applicant here, present? Thank you.
I'm here. Present. I'm a trustee member and I'll let Mr. represent.
Thank you. Staff?
Thank you. I have a presentation up on the screen. The highlighted, red outlined parcel is the subject parcel on which the building to be, requested to be demolished, is located. This is the elevation of the building, and I have a small diagram at the bottom left. The house, up is the front facing ocean, and the red is where the picture was taken from, so that you can get an idea of which angle it is of the building. So this is the front right portion of the building. This is the site plan that was sent to us. This is the right rear of the building. The rear of the building. And here's the front left of the building. And as you notice, there are two accessory structures, mobile accessory structures at the rear. Those, I have been told by the applicant, are not going to be demolished. They are likely to be moved to a different location, but they will not be taken down with the rest of the building. The applicant would like you to consider approval for the demolition of the building. The building is and was being used for a youth activities building. The house was built in nineteen fifty-three, and according to our tax assessor's records, it is valued at forty-six thousand, three hundred dollars. The building, the applicant reports that the building is full of mold and infested with fleas, and the repair of the building would cost more than the building is currently worth.
I would like also add that asbestos has also been...
Oh, that's right. The applicant, the applicant also let us know today that there was an issue or is an issue with asbestos in the building. And the agent for the applicant will be able to address that when the, a registered fund a little bit later. There's no historical interest in this structure. County records do show the house to be sixty-three years old. However, the building is not unusual or uncommon in design, and would not be difficult to reproduce if needed at any time. The building does not improve real estate values, nor does it generate business or attract tourists. I have the possible motions up on the screen, and at this time, I'd like to answer any questions while we have. I did receive some further items today from the applicant. I had those actual seats before the meeting for you all to look over, just for general knowledge. It was a letter from the applicant's agent, Mr. Rents. There was a demolition estimate in the survey picture that we showed earlier in the presentation. And if I could answer any questions?
Any questions for staff? The applicant like to present something?
Well, I think Casey, thank you very much. And Casey, here while presented the concerns we have with the building, it's simply a matter that we're no longer using the building, and we're paying for expenses associated with it at this time. The repairs that would be necessary to use the building are so great that we are simply using other facilities on the church grounds. The ultimate goal is obviously to have a slate there for future use at some point in time, from the standpoint of long-range planning. But the immediate need and use for us is not to continue to use that, that house in its present condition.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone want to speak in favor of this application? Please step forward. Hearing that signal, anyone opposed, want to step forward? Thank you.
Mayor Lancaster, since this is in the Village Preservation District, could the motion include the fact that doing demolition trees should be protected? As there's been no request to remove any of the trees, and in prior demolitions in this district, trees have been demolished along with the structure, and that shouldn't happen.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Could we get the applicant's representative maybe to make a rep... I don't know what's the right way to do this, but...
That is the plan to protect it.
I'm sorry?
That is the plan, to protect all the trees there, the existing oaks and other trees that are in place. We've gone over this with the individual who will be doing the actual demolition work, and the importance to us as well, because of the property to keep those trees.
Okay, thank you. Someone has a, wanna make a motion?
I believe that request about trees is already in the ordinances to remove a tree in a village preservation area, you must get a permit.
I move to approve application VP 3326. Second.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. At this juncture, I believe Mr. Commissioner Lawrence had a statement he wanted to make.
What do you have?
I think you're gonna need a microphone.
As we look at our decision-making process here this evening, and where we're going in the future, I spent some time looking at where we're going and how we're going to get there. As we look at our decision-making process, currently, we're looking at eighteen ten, Federico Road. Across the street, we're looking at the Exarch Bank. We have another pending situation. Flash Foods. We also have Friendly Express in ahead of that, and then if you look further to the west, you have the Post Office. Currently, there are nineteen thousand vehicles traveling up and down Federico Road. If we were to approve two additional, pending, that should take us up to twenty thousand vehicles on a daily basis. My question is, what are we trying to accomplish? Think about it for a moment. We're trying to maintain and enhance the benefit of this island called St. Silens. Before we impulsively make any decisions one way or the other, I ask you to think about what we're trying to accomplish. Thank you very much.
Our next item is a public hearing as well. To consider SVP 3306, Weber's Browner Factory. Consider request for special use to allow a drinking establishment at an existing retail alcohol sales establishment. The property is located on the south side of the Longview Shopping Center, approximately ninety-five feet from the intersection of Longview Plaza and Federico Road, parcel IDO four dash oh two two fifty-two. Callie Weber, owner and applicant, has requested a deferral on this matter. Does the applicant want, is the applicant present?
Just here.
She is here. Okay, thank you. Oh, there you are. Thank you. Did you want to make a statement or anything? No? Okay, thank you.
I have a question for the staff. Why are they keep asking for deferrals on this? I mean, I just...
I have a question.
I thought it was from... Why, why do they keep making requests for deferral?
Mr. Humphries, I can address that. The application before you is a special use permit for a drinking establishment, essentially a bar. Our alcohol ordinance has a little bit of a hint of bureaucracy here. There, there's a possibility of an amendment to the alcohol ordinance, or basically right now, even if you gave a special use permit, the use that you would allow would not be allowed at that location by our alcohol ordinance. We're looking at the possibility of amendment to alcohol ordinance, so until that issue's decided, the applicant would like to defer consideration of special use permit.
So it's not anything pertaining to this?
No, it has to do with the alcohol licensing ordinance.
Thank you.
Since this is a public hearing, does anyone want to...
They asked for a deferral.
Right.
So we need to vote on the deferral, right?
All right. Well, no comments on the deferral, whether we vote on it or not?
Not for a public hearing.
Will? A request for a deferral? We don't have a hearing whether to defer it or not?
Unless, unless the...
Unless the applicant... Okay, all right. Then I'll entertain a motion.
I recommend defer SVP 3306.
Second. All those in favor?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, could you, to a date service, please?
Oh, to our next meeting? September twentieth?
To the next meeting.
September twentieth, I believe it is. All those in favor? All right, so moved. All right. Our next item is SP 3299 Dollar General. Consider site plan for the Dollar General, a commercial retail store. The property, eighteen ten Federico Road, is owned HC Highway Commercial, and is located approximately two-hundred-and-seventy-five feet south of its intersection with Lower View Drive, and approximately a hundred-and-ninety feet north of its intersection with River View Drive. Parcel IDO four dash oh two four six nine. Tidewater Engineering Inc., agent for applicant. Terramore Development LLC for owner. Federica Land Holdings LLC owner. The applicant has requested a deferral. And my understanding is that the drawings we have are not, is, I'll let staff report on that, but I think what we have before is, is not the latest drawings.
That is correct. They have submitted newer, newer schematics for roadway changes and, well, at least roadway changes that we have not had a chance to evaluate yet. So, those were submitted after we sent out the agenda.
And my understanding is that is in response to public comments, correct, that they have received? Or staff comment?
I can't, I can't answer that. That would, that would have to be something that the applicant would need to answer.
Is the applicant here? All right, thank you. Okay, Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I think, and it's been tradition, that when the deferral is asked for, this commission has granted that. And Preston, maybe you can answer that, 'cause you've been on this probably longer than anybody, but I know since my time, been on here, when there's been a deferral asked, we've given that, simply because the information we have is not complete.
Yeah, since the formation of Island Planning Commission, we have never not given a deferral when the applicant asked for it. The applicant has changed in his application, I don't know how we can vote on an application we haven't looked at. So there's been a change to the application that is different than what we have studied, and it's, it makes it very difficult to make a decision on something that we have not reviewed, nor has staff reviewed. So we're gonna have something new to look at, and it seems logical that we, with that reason, would grant the deferral.
May I say something? Oh, we do.
Yes, yes.
Does this...
Yeah, he works, but you got, you gotta pick it up and put it in your mouth.
I agree with what has been said about, but that, I believe that the applicant is taking advantage of the goodwill of this commission. Particularly when the, the reason for the applicant asking for another deferral is, it is in our intention to address every item adequately. It's impossible for the applicant to, to address every issue adequately. The issues are piling up more and more, and we've asked the good citizens of this community, this is the third time they've shown up wanting to be heard, and each time, they've been turned away. I think that is wrong, and I think we should deny this deferral.
I respectfully disagree. I think that the applicant is trying to address the concerns that have been posed to him, where a lot of times...
Please, please be respectful.
But, you know, I, you know, everybody seems there's a lot of opposition to this. It seems like one more month just adds that much longer that if anything happens, will happen. So I make the motion that we defer SP 3299 until September twentieth meeting, is that?
Please, please. I mean, really. Is there a second to the motion?
I see.
All those in favor of deferral?
Discussion?
If we want a discussion.
I think we need to have some discussion if we're gonna make any decisions at all. I guess I would ask for some guidance, being new here, ask for some guidance from our counselor regarding what is the legal status that we're sitting in here about making a decision or not a decision tonight to defer.
Commissioner, the, the choice whether to go decide tonight or not is, is with this commission. If you choose to defer, obviously, that will be heard next month. If that motion, you know, fails, then I'm still on your agenda, and you're free to hear it and discuss it, vote up or down, as you would any normal item.
Is there a limit to how many times an applicant can change their application so that we don't have to continue dragging the community through this?
No, so there's nothing in an ordinance that prevents an applicant from, from commending the application at any point up until it's heard.
So it's my understanding that the corporation doesn't even plan to make a court decision until a year or more from now, so they can continue every month to change their proposal?
Once y'all make a decision on the proposal, then if they want to make changes to that, they have to come back to you. But up until that time, they can continue making changes if they like. However, you know, when they come up on your agenda, they're always free to consider what surprised you that night if you want to.
Are you able to determine if this applicant has the necessary right, title, and interest for them to be properly before this county?
Well, I've been asked to look at that, but, you know, I know they're not the owners current, well, the owner, I believe, property is the one that's saying the application.
Does the county's application process require the applicant or its agent to have the necessary legal right, title, and interest?
What? Yes, sir.
So the answer should be yes, they do have that, otherwise, they're not properly before us.
Yes, sir, but I'm not sure that anyone, from my knowledge, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm not, no one's raised to me the fact that they don't have the right or title to, to pursue this application.
And has the staff reviewed all of the title and legal access easements, roadway easements, utility easements, property, property, property title interests to determine that they have a proper application?
Sir, a title opinion or title search is not a requirement of the ordinance to be submitted, so that's not something the staff would have gotten, asked, or listed or reviewed. I, I can tell you that the, the applications, you know, I believe, and I have to defer David on this, I'm not sure if there's a, but we take them at their word on application as far as, as who the owner is and that sort of thing. We don't have a requirement in our ordinance that they, you know, produce a title accord or who would do that. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff or comments? We have a motion on the floor to defer. All those in favor? Raise your hand. All those opposed? Three. So, we will be going forward with what we have before us.
May I address a question to the chair?
Sorry?
May I address a question to the chair?
Certainly.
And once again, I'm being new here, the reason why I asked for the legal guidance about the status of the decision that we would make about deferral tonight, am I now to understand that a timeout is a failure of the motion to proceed, and so they're, to defer, I mean?
When you have a three-three split on a motion to defer, the motion, there's no action, the motion fails. There's no, no motion, it failed. So in that case, we go forward with what's on our agenda.
Do we need a motion to go forward, or do we just continue to have discussion?
It's on our, it's on our agenda, so we can just move forward with what's on our agenda. Okay? So we're gonna go forward with the side of, with what we've been presented, so the fact that the applicant has revised the plans, those are before us. We have to go with what we have. That being the case... Where's my agenda? One moment, please.
Madam Chair, before you see outline, in the red outline, the subject property, Federico Road, down to your left, there, the borderline subdivision is in behind you, to your, to your right, lower right, next slide. This is the house that's on the property currently. The site is owned, Highway Commercial, and this would be, is a house that was there when the property was resigned, next slide. This is looking down Federico Road towards the traffic circle, and up the road, away from the property, towards Sea Island Avenue. And this is looking into where the drain is, which is between subdivision and, and the commercial property. This is the whole bank across the street that's now used as an antique facility. This is the site plan showing all the required parking per ordinance without any parking waiver, as they have requested. They've requested a twenty-five percent reduction as allowed from the office. Park site plan to reduce the amount of surface parking because they do not need it based upon their, their own determination, and the area, I think Casey can roll the next slide, you can see off the, off the right, where the area is that the parking disappears from, it's part, it's part of that tree area, save area. Next slide. There's two comparisons showing that, that back area. There are two comparisons showing that back area. Pond changes in configuration, but that pond area, detention area would have to be sized to accommodate whatever parking and service building and purpose areas totally on the site. So just because a parking area appears larger on one does not necessarily mean that the volume has changed. It would have to comply with the retention requirements on that site, so to comply with the parking and the building area. Next slide. This is a conceptual land, escape plan with the parking wave in there. And that's it, without it being waved. This is the conceptual architectural plans for the elevations for the structure.
What does it mean, parking wave?
That means there would be a, there is an application in as part of this site plan to reduce the amount of parking on site by 25%. This planning commission is allowed to do that in order to save green space and trees. The applicant is requesting site plan approval to construct about 11,000 square foot dollar gem store at 1810 Frederica Road. Forty-three parking spaces are required by code for that business. The applicant is requesting an 11 space reduction to 32 parking spaces. There are several types of buffers that are required on this site based upon where it's located. There is a type A landscape buffer required adjacent to the Laurel View Common area and/ Dan Drain Ditch area. There's a type D buffer required along the front edge of Frederica Road. There's also a type D buffer around the dumpster area, and then there's intermodal access easement required to the adjacent Hanover Square parking area that's required and shown. There's possible actions that you have with this one. You can approve the site plan presented, you can approve it with conditions, you can defer action or deny the application. And those are possible motions. If you have any questions, I can address those. I can address the one that Carl Lawrence started with, decided with. The traffic study that you presented with does not include the possible, possible, because we're in lawsuit litigation right now, flash food site, which is south of this site on the opposite side of the road. So there is that implication, that that has not been incorporated into any of the traffic study because it's not a known condition. Right now, we have an empty restaurant sitting there. So that, those numbers have not been incorporated into the traffic study that you have presented.
Any questions for staff?
Chair, you all have one plan that is Plan Sheet 11. This Plan Sheet has not been totally reviewed by staff. It's the one that's handed out tonight. It reflects the changes on Frederica Road, and I think the applicant will speak to that. Most of those changes are a result of trying to demonstrate to the satisfaction of the missing commissioner, Mr. Ellis, the required improvements on Frederica Road as part of this construction project associated with providing adequate access to this site as required by 619. But I'm not involved with, Peter Schornauer is the engineer for the applicant, and he has been involved with those conversations with Mr. Ellis.
Do you have a slide please?
No, do not. It's very similar to the site plan slide. It has shown, however, the area shifts more in towards the site and requires some proposed tree removal as part of the implications to move the lanes over. Frederica Road, even though it's a slow road in that area, it's got a condition called superelevation, which means it pitches one way, and to wind and overcome that pitch and provide adequate access, you have to do certain transitions on the road, and he felt it would be better to shift it into, towards the site to take care of those transitions and take advantage of the whole right-of-way that's towards the back area.
Any questions for staff? This is a site plan approval, and as you know, generally there is no public comment on site plan approval, there's no public hearing. We are making an exception, given the community's complete involvement in this one, so we're going to have, we're allowed for an hour hearing, as we would for any normal public hearing. We're going to have a half an hour for each side. So if your group does have a spokesperson, I strongly suggest you let that person speak because the time is allowed at a half an hour for each side. So first, let's hear from the applicant. Yes, sir.
That was my question.
We're going to hear from the applicant first. Could you step forward, please?
Chair, do you have a question?
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Smith. We are not hearing from you at this moment, we're hearing from the applicant right now. We will hear from you in a moment.
I can't hear what you were saying now, but why?
Okay, thank you. Please, Mr. Advocate, please come back. Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Peter Schornauer, I'm with Todd Lawrence Engineering, and as you mentioned, I'm the agent for the applicant.
I'm sir. I'm here.
I hear you, thank you. Good afternoon, my name is Peter Schornauer, I'm with Todd Lawrence Engineering, and as you mentioned in your presentation, I am the agent for the applicant, Terra More Development, who is the representative here today as well. I'm here to answer any questions, I know there are going to be a number of questions, but you know, one of the things I'd like to point out as part of the deferral request was not for the site plan itself, because we feel we've addressed everything. In fact, staff has reviewed the site plan and determined it satisfactorily complies with all the political codes ordinance. What we, why we're here is because we approached Mr. Ellis, being a retired traffic engineer, and requested his input on proposed road improvement plans, which is actually separate from the site plan. He had given back some concerns and comments, and that's what we're working on addressing. And I had communication with him, and we are getting closer to a viable solution. The plan that you had before you, I believe, Mr. Andy said you've got some hard copies there, that was rendition, A, the new plan, which would be moving improvements eastward towards us where we have more right-of-way to work with, a lot of right-of-way to work with. Some of the things it does by moving that road east is it keeps the existing watering and gas main out, what would be, what would be the southbound through lane with the plan that you, that you have. It also deals with, takes care of superelevation concerns, and it makes that whole curve, which has an odd jog over in front of any of the Ozarks, it's actually got a cusp in the road, we can smooth all that out with the plan. And that plan, does that plan still have what Evan first was, king, and that was just based on existing striping, lane striping out there. So what we did is we actually, with the proposal, do it to move improvement seating a little bit further south to get rid of that king and make the whole thoroughfare that much closer to what would normally be appropriate for 30 mile an hour road. Other than that, I feel, you know, we can address all of the concerns of the site plan itself, but if you want to talk about it, I'll try to do my best to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for the applicant?
I have a, I guess, I guess I have a question that, it bothers me a great deal that we have a sitting member of the Island Planning Commission participating in trying to design plans to come before the Island Planning Commission. That seems to be an obvious conflict of interest to me. I'm not a lawyer, but that, I mean, it doesn't seem right.
Well, we listen to comments from the community, from staff, and from Island Planning Commission, and we, sorry, I apologize, we listen to comments from the community, from staff, from Island Planning Commission members, and we're trying to address all the concerns. I think, I think we would be undue to not to address comments from coming from our planning commission. There was valid concerns, and we felt it appropriate to address them. We're, we're taking an extra step to try to address the concerns of people, especially people who have experience with this sort of things, technical things.
I have a question for you. When you're exiting the property, to me, there's a bit of a blind curb there, you can't see the light there, and the one that's south of it, and I don't, I don't know, if you're coming out of there, how would you know whether the light is green or red, or whether people are coming, or stopping, or going, or, I mean, what is the sight line, a safe sight distance for that? I read in the materials that a sight line triangle had been provided to somebody, but I haven't seen it.
Okay. The U standards based on George DOT, as well as the ASHTO agreement, basically for 30 mile an hour speed limit, you've got sight distance on a three-lane road, sight distance to the right, sight distance to the left. One is 300, I think it's 310 feet by memory, the other's 335 feet, where you create a triangle, and there shouldn't be anything in that triangle, utility pole, a tree, anything between two and a half and 14 feet, that area needs to be cleared. So you've got a pylon sign that's a lot higher, or a low ground mining sign or some hedges, that's provided for it. And we acknowledged in that plan, too, that there are trees that are going to have to come down. We mentioned George Power out there, talking about, you know, there's three wooden power poles, they can move them, that confirmation from George Power, so we're doing our due diligence, make sure what we are presenting, handi-construted.
Okay, that's to the south?
And to the north.
And, and to the north?
It's one way, yeah. And to the, to the north, there are some things that have to move and come down, unfortunately, and to the south as well.
So whose property?
County right-of-way.
County right-of-way.
Now, I mean, there's hundreds, maybe I'm exaggerating, there's dozens of instances where things are in sight triangles, we're used to that. But as an engineer, I can't, I can't promote that, I can't say, hey, everywhere else, you know, we've got trees, and I can't, I can barely get out of a lot of places, you know, having my nose in traffic. So we're trying to avoid that for this property, and do what's right and safe.
Is it correct that I read in here that there are about, let me see here, I'll be correct on this. It appears to me that you're taking down thirteen, you're taking down 16 trees. Please, please, you know, let me at least finish my comment before you make your moans, please. But it seems to me that you're taking down 16 trees, 10 of which are in poor condition, and you're replanting 13 new trees. Is that accurate?
I can't, that's on the site plan, as you said, homes are local, ours in Nysgate.
That's what it appears to me.
So, but I think those numbers are, they're at least close, and yes, trees are being removed, and we're not, we're not trying to hide that, we're not trying to hide the fact that trees have to come out. What we are saying, though, is we designed the site as best we can to save some pretty good trees, especially up front where we have purpose pavement and parking spaces removed to protect one of the large trees. We've set the building back farther than we typically would in order to save as many trees as possible. And as far as the tree ordinance, we far exceed the tree ordinance, the minimum tree ordinance requirements as far as what we're keeping. And we're adding some trees for buffers that are required, and we've offered the name of the overview, additional trees and the buffers to help stream our building as best as possible.
Okay. I have no more comments. Questions for the applicant? Does anyone have any more questions for the applicant? Please, go ahead.
Does your traffic study factor in the full build-out study that the county had done of all of the building permits that have been issued but not constructed?
I have to defer that for a moment, Commissioner. We are a traffic engineer here. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Jeff Buckholz, traffic engineer from Jacksonville, Florida. We did a traffic study for the site, and you're asking basically about growth. Is there any growth?
No, I asked specifically about, did your study factor in the build-out before that was done for the county?
No. We got, we got no comments, obviously no comments on our study from the county.
So if we have another 10,000 cars a day based on the approved but not built residences on the island, would that affect the traffic in front of the property on Frederica Road?
Obviously, that's a big issue, but yes, obviously would. The way we got it growth was to look at, as the pine study did, as you had done last October 2015, look at traffic growth, current traffic growth in the area. And as in most of southeast United States in America, traffic was growing pretty good until the recession did in 2007, and since then, things have been pretty level, generally. And it's also the case on the island, things have been pretty, pretty level. The counts on, and your counts in your island have been fairly level since then. It depends on the road, some of the jobs might come down.
Thank you. I have questions for the applicant.
Okay, if the applicant could please come forward again, we have more questions. Thank you.
I don't know what decision this commission is going to make today or in the future, but I would say that if traffic is one of the requirements that this commission is required to look at, and the staff, and the county, that I would expect at least as one member to have the complete information, which would be the impact of the traffic once all of the approved but not yet constructed residences are on the island, because that will come into effect during the life of this business, I believe. So that's, I'm just telling you where I'll be coming from in the future. I've read very carefully the mission that we represent here on behalf of the public, and I, the question I would have for you is, does your client believe that the proposal meets the requirements of being harmonious with the adjacent neighborhoods?
I don't think I can speak to my client because I haven't had that, is that a special thing?
Will this business be a franchise or a company-owned operation?
As a junior project, I really don't get involved in detail, honestly.
This speaks to some of the questions I had earlier about white title and interest because if this discussion does go forward, I would expect to be making recommendations for specific conditions, financial commitments that the corporation would want to have agreed to, and so I think it's important that this commission understand exactly what is the nature of the business that we're dealing with, because our job is to look down the road long-term, and this corporation is on a very, very, very accelerated fast-growth curve. They have over 13,000 stores. In many states, they are doing exactly what they're doing here in Georgia, which is to make proposals in small towns and then continually request deferrals. They are also on a fast track to sell more and more franchises, so that I believe that the question for us here is sustainability and what will happen to the future of that site if in fact it is converted from its current use. So these are all pertinent factors, at least to some of us, in making our consideration of whatever decision it is that we come to. Thank you.
Any more questions for the applicant? Thank you.
I'm wondering, I'm, he's a spokesman for the applicant, but he says he can't answer Mr. Meadows' questions. Is someone present who can?
Yes, come on in.
My name is Crystal Paulson. It's all hypothetical, have you seen the clothes?
Hey, guys. My name is Josh Upsetler, I'm the executive vice president of Terra More Development. Did not realize I was going to be here, so I apologize for my dress, I didn't really prepare myself. If you would like to repeat your question, I'd be happy to answer any, anything related to ownership. This is a triple net lease, obviously Dollar General's, this individual corporation, we're acting as preferred developers for Dollar General. We will own the property. We, Terra More Development, our company.
And who will own the store?
This, Terra More Development, will own the improvements within, you know, the boundary of the property, and we will lease the store back to Dollar General, which we have an executed lease that's guaranteed 15 years with four or five-year options.
So if this commission determines that it would wish to proceed tonight to make a decision on this? a decision on this project, would you, would your corporation be willing to make financial commitments for the future of the site, should the company decide to close or sell the store?
You know, obviously, it would be in our best interest, we can't control if Dollar General were to close the store. The lease is guaranteed for 15 years, so we have that. But as an owner, by all means, again, we haven't touched on a lot of things, the appearance of the store, what it's going to look like, this is going to be a very attractive store, it's not your stereotypical Dollar General, designed by a local architect, with that in mind. I mean, our true interest, we're not here to upset anybody, we're not here to make commitments, we're here to draw from the current customer base here, the locals. But to answer your question, long-term, you know, this is going to be a very attractive development. As an investor and as an owner, it's very important, if Dollar General were to go dark, that we can backfill this to draw revenue from it.
Did you hear the question I asked earlier about the build-out study?
The build, no sir, I did not. It is kind of difficult to hear back there.
He's got the question, so I hope you folks will report back. Thank you.
Okay, and I could most likely address it, if you want to repeat it, if not.
I've already been told the answer is no, so thank you.
Is your company the one that developed the Dollar General stores in Darien, Georgia?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
It's very unsightly, the one that you've closed and opened another one close by. Is that 15 years, or is that, I mean, it seems to me...
That one, that was a double net lease, it was under a different structure, so that would have been a 10-year lease, most likely. I was, I did not own that store, but at the expiration of that lease, that store did so well that it was relocated to the new location. That store is actually 12,400 acres per feet, so they increased the space there, and we did build it. We increased the space to accommodate more grocery options.
But the empty building across from B&amp;J's seafood is very unattractive, sitting there empty.
I'm told it's being backfilled by O'Reilly's, I can't confirm that, but I have been told that.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this time, I will open it up for public, oh, I'm sorry, the applicant still has a representative to speak. Thank you. Yes, okay, please speak up.
Mr. Haywood, do we have the renderings loaded up that we prepared? The renderings?
Please speak up.
Do you have the renderings that we prepared for the exterior of the store loaded up?
The color, no, the color ones I...
I had asked you to load those for us, Casey, in an email.
I didn't, uh, I did not.
I think I sent some of the renderings to some of you, and it's not a typical Dollar General store. I apologize if anyone here, for the staff, not being the renderings with them, but they asked us, the chairman would ask us as local architects to prepare what we thought would be a positive design for Dollar General on St. Simon's. It's a brick store with the stucco arches, it's got shutters on the outside, have a small roof area, again, this is, this is the elevations, we did have some color renderings which we...
Did you send the renderings to me?
No, I did not, Mr. Meadows.
Which members did you send them to?
I sent them to Casey, I sent them to David Haywood, there's some right there.
I was just going to show them, pass them around.
I don't like people sending things...
Well, they were sent to staff, staff is supposed to send them out, not me.
They were sent to staff.
And to certain members of the committee.
The chairman, yeah, but it's not my responsibility, it's the staff's responsibility to send them out.
But this is, this is exterior of the store. A couple of things they did, they changed the sign, the sign is not the great big yellow O-Tai sign that you typically see on the exterior of the store, above the entrance, those are, those are smaller letters, and the only public sign is, it just says Dollar General, likewise with a small mining sign at the screen. Again, more appropriate scale, particularly seals and signs. You see from the elevations, you got arches, again, the brick base, the area around the entrance is...
Thank you, Mr. Osery.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I wanted to say one last thing, as far as the traffic study goes, because in, I did give some things from the papers, some comments in the payment paper, so that was sort of a kind of unofficial response to our traffic study. And the seasonality issue, whether we counted during the peak season or not, both for growth and for seasonality, we used the pond report, which was an itemized traffic study, all I did last year, to see what the seasonal differences were on Frederica Road, not throughout the island, but on Frederica Road. And that's where we came up with our seasonal and our growth information. And also, we went out and verified that our March counts are similar to the July counts, they're almost exactly the same, we did both, daily counts at both times, in the peak of the summer and March, they're about the same, which is typical of many island-type communities, Meeley Island, Jekyll Island, March is a pretty busy month, or as we know, there are there are...
Did you include in the litigation for fresh foods?
Pardon?
Did you include the projection for fat, fresh foods?
The way the pond study works, it looks like, it looks at the island as a whole, we're all thinking of it as a whole, and each road, far into the future, I mean, all the way to 24, they don't look at individual development.
That's a sound provision.
Yeah, so, yeah, so as far as any individual development goes, no, it's a, it's a, it's a projection in total. Yes.
Any more comments for questions for the applicants? Okay. Yes, sir, please come forward.
Thank you. I think we've got a few minutes left, so I'd just like to, you know, close right now, you know, again, saying that we do have, we're going to staff a compliant site plan here, and we know we're working on road improvement plans, and I know we can, we can come to a design that's going to satisfy everybody predominantly on issues of safety, and also, if we have these 30 minutes, I'd like an opportunity to maybe, you know, link with us if we have some questions that need to be answered.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I'm going to ask first, does, anyone else want to speak in favor of this development site plan?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm Julia Snell.
Hi, there's...
And yes, I would like to speak in favor of this application. Before you start running, I was influenced at a very early age by Swiss modest proposal having to do with the starving Irish and their children. I have looked at the six applications filed by Terramore for five of their stores, mainland, their Dollar General stores, Ms. Baconheart can back me up on this. The, the scuffle of applications approved by the mainland planning base on inch and a half foot, the application so far for this one, this one measly Dollar General store on this island is now approaching four inches thick. And if we go on denying these extra proposals, we're, we're just going to chase away developers who want to bring in more national franchises. I'm going to speak in favor of this proposal. We heard from a representative for Terramore, now he says he's going to own it. Now, Terramore has sold all of the other stores they have developed in the county, on the mainland, and in the one store in Brunswick, but he says he's going to keep it, and he looks like a nice man, then we have him to hold responsible, we can get him down from, where is it, Thomasville, Georgia. And the engineer for this heard is a local person, I think he lived right here on the island. Would he do anything that he thought would offend his community and hurt this community? No, of course not. Mr. Osery, a former member of this store, is the architect who has an office right next to the Dollar General store, and he's come up with a wonderful design, quite suitable for the island. And the owner of the property, who has owned it since 1998, which is a local manager, and I'm sure she knows what is good for the site, so by all means, approve this application. I thank you humbly.
Would anyone else like to speak in favor of this application? Hearing none, seeing none, then we'll go to, would anyone like to speak opposed to this application? Please step forward, you have five minutes.
Good evening, commissioners, my name is Mary Helen Moses, I'm a resident of St. Simon's Island, and I represent the Laurelview Homeowners Association. I had handed to the commissioners a little visual, and I did email it to staff earlier this afternoon, I'm not sure it made it on there, but what I've done is taken sheets one, two, three, nine, and 10 of the site plan, and I have a CAD program, so I was doing paper dolls and taking and cutting and pasting, but if you can take a look at it, and there's some out in the audience, what I want to speak to is not the changes that have been submitted since this, that were basis for the deferral, I'm speaking to the site plan itself and the actual property, not the road develops, not developments, not any of that. And I would take issue with the applicant's suggestion that he has met all the requirements, or that the application has met all the requirements of the ordinances. And I'm just going to speak to a few of them. First has to do with the parking reduction, the requested parking reduction, and I know the shop did have a comparison of the two sites, with and without the parking reduction, we could pull that up, that would be helpful. There we go. That does not show, that shows the area that's going to be reduced. And it is possible, of course, as you know, for under section 611.7B, for the commission to grant a waiver of 25% of the parking places. What is required for the grant of that waiver, however, is a tabulation of 450 square feet for every parking space that is waived. And that 450 square feet, which would total 4,950 square feet with this proposed waiver, there should be an additional 4,950 square feet of undeveloped area. And that tabulation does not appear in the site plan, it is specifically required by 611.7B. We don't have that tabulation.
Trees, please protect our community.
My name is Dr. Charles Spitzer, and I live here on the island. I'm a physician, not a traffic engineer, but I have spent many determined hours looking at the pine study, the 2015 study, before I went to the pine company to assess the traffic situation on St. Simon's Island. I've gone through that study at length. The study is fatally flawed, and they use very questionable. I want to give you one example on Frederica Road. They did what's called a speedrun of late study on Frederica Road. This is a study where they time, they timed cars as they go from one intersection to the next intersection, and they measured the time they were using. They only did this study one afternoon at rush hour. The day was July 2nd, in the afternoon. Now from that, they extrapolated their data throughout the rest of the year and all the way to 2035. This is what statisticians would call an egregious selection bias. What they did is represent you of the traffic situation now. They concluded on Frederica Road that there was minimal delay during rush hour. Anyone who drives on Frederica Road now knows that is absurdly false.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Nick Bluehorn, and I also live here on the island. And Ms. Moses did a great job, and I'm not going to repeat anything she touched upon, except if you have to go with a plan which is not allowed parking reduction, which you might have to, I want you to look at where the trailer loading and unloading site is located, right behind about a half a dozen parking spots. That trailer unloading and loading spot cannot block any parking access at all. So that site plan is flawed. I can't believe they even submitted that they would have zoning like this. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Hugh Borger, and I'm a resident here on St. Simon's Island. Seventy years back, 15 days back, my wife and I made a conscious effort up and down the coast and selected St. Simon's as our residence and our home for retirement. I've just recently retired. I've only had the privilege of living here full-time about six months now. In that 10 years I've owned property here on the island, I've watched the island steadily degrade from the characteristics that we sought and made the decision to make this our retirement home. A lot of it I wasn't here because my profession carried me around the world. I am an engineer by training, and I understand a lot of what these gentlemen are talking about. And with all due respect, if you don't touch the subject, ride Frederica Road, and understand what it's all about by looking at it, the statistics have very little credibility. I learned that painfully in my career traveling the world in construction. That is my business, road construction as well as heavy construction. So if you just listen to the discussions today, aside from all the emotion that's around the trees, etc., and by the way, I bought here on the island four of the trees, okay? But if you just listen to the flaws that have been brought forth, the questions that have not been answered, the number of times you've had to bring this forward, in my business of development of multi-million dollar and million dollar projects, to be able to come up and not be able to come up with a full plan was unforgivable. People lost their job, delighted with it. And trying to make it pass to the comments that were made earlier, we need to really consider what we're trying to do here on the island. And I would tell you, from my personal perspective and speaking for my family, I don't want Dollar General on this island. We can go to the mainland, and everything else, most of what that store offers is available here on the island anyway. So let's please consider what we're doing here. The residents here, most of the folks in this room are residents here on the island, I don't know all, all right? But we're speaking pretty loudly, folks. Are you listening? Are you listening? We don't want you.
Good evening. I'm Willie Vice, I live in Laurelview. I chose St. Simon's for several reasons. I'd ask your attention to the west here. Look at that scene, I don't have any facts or figures. I'm just talking from the heart here. Looking this way, at the bit of trees, Spanish mosses hanging, that's what makes this place special. You can go to the beach in Georgia, in Savannah, Georgia, drive down to Savannah, Georgia, go to the beach. Do you know how special St. Simon's is? You can't go to the beach again until you get to St. Simon's. Seventy miles, seventy miles before you can get to this beach, before you can get to this jewel of the golden islands. And we've got a lot of stores here. You can buy everything in this island, well, almost everything, on St. Simon's Island. And what if we put one more store that sells everything that we can buy at any other store? Is that going to improve the life? Is that going to improve the jewel of this community? I don't think so. I believe that these engineers and smart guys that know all of this information, and they have a lot, if it's commercial, they have a lot. But it's going to affect all of us who hold this place as so very special. A lot of the government in the last few years, the last 10 years, it's been undeniably pillory. I take my vote in the air every day down to St. Simon's Marine. And when they build those down, 15 acres, I shed tears. I did. What a tragedy. Let's don't do that again, guys. Let's don't do that.
Our half an hour of opposition is closed, so the public hearing is now closed.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Public hearing portion is now closed. Okay, we're going to have now, we have, uh-
Other information I can share. I stopped speaking at three minutes after the hour, so I think there's a little more time. And I was the only person to speak in favor, so I think there's a little more time available.
I close the public hearing. Okay. Commissioners, your pleasure.
Does, I'd like to have a chance to answer.
Allen, would you come forward? I think we have some rebuttal you asked for.
Yeah. Yes, I do have a little bit of a rebuttal. More than the specific items, I'm better at offering rebuttals, the plan that I created. Mary Helen Moses had some very specific things I would like to address, pardon me, to address the, um, the audience issues. Parking reduction, okay, we offered a, that's why we offered an alternate plan, showing the 42 spaces, showing that we can provide, and we're happy to, we don't want to, I don't think you want us to. Last week, David Haney, I believe, my guess is from Mary Helen Moses's involvement, said, Pete, show me a plan we can fit that 450 square feet per place, first parking space that you want to eliminate. So I did, I submitted it to David on the Wednesday on 8/10. And what I did is I reconfigured the pond, and I have lots of different pond configurations. And there's so much we can do with drainage on this site. If I run out of room, because we paved the whole site, I can put it underneath the parking. So there's a lot of ways to get around drainage. So what I did is I reran my drainage calculations, I reconfigured the pond, I gave myself the more volume than I actually need. I'm satisfied, I'll make it work. Paul's going to make sure that it works. Mr. Pierce, if Paul's working, I'm going to make sure it works. So I think we've got that covered.
May I ask a question? The site plan we have before is dated 6/28/16.
There's a site plan David asked me to create, an exhibit, actually, that he asked me to create to show us, 450 feet, square feet. Now, in reality, it only takes-
One of the three drawings.
If you have, uh-
I don't know what he's talking about. This is parking, this is a lane.
I'm sorry. Any other question?
Oh, here, oh, here. Okay.
The point, we should be able to vision to have a reduction in parking, and we'll reconsider that, you know, we think it's a better thing, we get to keep more trees. But if that's a problem, we can, as a second choice, go with the 42 spaces.
Okay.
We've got handed to us tonight one sheet, one of 11, dated 8/10, and it requires a parking reduction.
This was a rush job, so I didn't change, I didn't change the date or put a revision date, because it was just an exhibit, not an amendment to the actual site plan, it's available. What it does, there's a hatch area between Amherst Square and Detention Area that got reconfigured, that shows there's 450 feet, 411 spaces, actually have a little bit more square footage in there. It actually takes 270 square feet, you know, for parking space in the drive aisle, but counting the bars, 450, so it's only 450. The way access, we can show that, it shows that we have that open space, I can reconfigure the detention area.
I see it.
We actually never have prepared a drainage study for site plan, that's something that public work sometimes asks for, so we're proactive and wanting to submit it in case any questions are requested, so I'm adding more to the site plan. So that's why the drainage configure, that's why there are differing drainage configurations. Parking on the property line, now we've got, which I'm going to follow here, at least two feet, so if the grade separation is not bad, we'll put a little bit of retaining there. That happens, that's not uncommon situation, there's no buffer requirement between the two commercial uses. Inter parcel easement, we have 20 feet available for that. We surveyed and measured where the access, only access point could be on Amherst Square, okay? We provide 20 feet, we'll provide an easement, we cannot pull Amherst Square to provide an easement to us, but we're happy to provide that easement for tourists. And that was one of the big comments that got first in the, one thing that I missed. So that was a good comment. Trucks infringing on parking. The truck diagram shows the trucks do not go into a parking stall, okay? We're talking, on average, one truck, trailer a week. We're talking, on average, one truck trailer a week, not two or three a week. We have, we have Coca-Cola trucks, that sort of thing, that come more often, I'm not sure about that specific schedule, I can probably get that information while we're here, but the truck trailers, doesn't remember that, I'm told that's how they operate, the trucks are palletized, the loading zone, the loading time, I understand, please correct me if I'm wrong, roughly forty-five minutes, there's a scissor lift there, everything's on wheels, scissor lift down in, they want the trucks in and out, they don't want any of the trucks sitting there. So the notion that we're going to add thirty deliveries a day, a week, whatever, is unfounded. And the trucks, yeah, there is one, I took, I know that everybody's going to look at, if that truck is parked there, do those parking spaces, or do people have, do we get out of those parking spaces? And they do. I'm making revisions for that, and why, because we moved the building further north to make sure that we had that, drove the parking a little bit further south, but that's how we can show, demonstrate that it does work, it does work. We've got, we've got neat programs that help us get trucks in and out of it. I've done a lot of these stores, and that's how they all work out. You come in from the building and you back in. So there's going to be truck traffic in the parking lot, yes, this is a reality. They need to get the kids in there. Trees are coming down, if we are able to provide a safe improvement, and there needs to be improvements up in that for you to make that road safe. And as an engineer, in many ways, I'm, I can't see the forest because of the trees, because I'm an engineer, but a lot of unsafe situations on that road up and down. You see, you see this far trees, okay? I can't, I can't even face it, that tree is mine, let's put everybody in jeopardy. I'd like the same trees. Two of those trees we need to remove, one is pretty rotten in the base, welcome everybody to go out there and look at it. Another tree has a very limited canopy, that canopy's going to fill in the red trees.
Would you please be respectful? Please, please be respectful, he's in rebuttal.
So that's, that's mostly, I wanted to rebuttal and appreciate the opportunity, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. No, no, we're done.
It's not a public hearing, it's not a public hearing.
That's not a...
We're pulling back a week of time.
No, we're done.
Not for that, we're done.
All right, well, we thank you all for your input very much and your concern, we've gotten a lot of email, we've gotten a lot of reports, we've gotten phone calls, this is my stack of emails, so, um, we're going to have our discussion now about what we're going to do here, okay?
One question.
Sir?
I'm confused as to the drawings, as to the drawings and what is in the submitted that's actually being considered tonight versus what the engineers and whatever have submitted.
All right, I will tell you, I will tell you. What was submitted in our package is drawing one through eleven and is dated six-twenty-eight. Tonight before, so we got a new drawing for a substitution, I believe, of page one, which, um...
And my question, Madam Chairman, is is submitted tonight on the table for consideration by the panel, or is it just the submitted that you voted, that two folks voted, go ahead and consider tonight? On submitted date, part of the consideration today, connect.
One moment, and we'll get you an answer. We were, we were, we have these in our package, but we're giving these before the meeting. So is this our consideration, the one that's dated, uh, sheet one? Sheet one?
They've been submitted to staff, they did address one of the items that Mary Elmo's did about there.
So this is the, this is the one?
Yes, and the tree one, as has been alluded to on the sheet eleven, dealt with the issue that Mr. Ellis had been communicating with, um, the engineer about, about the road improvements.
Okay.
It's a public review, it must be a discussion, we need to draw a line in the sand, make sure we're real clear on what the rule is coming down on.
All right, I'll make that very clear. What is before us is we have substitution that we're giving us at, when we started our meeting, for sheet eleven. Go ahead. Oh, for sheet eleven, okay? We've got substitutions for sheet eleven, and we have substitutions for sheet one.
And those are part of your consideration?
And those are what we're going to be devoting on. So...
Not with the motion, not with the motion.
What?
Madam Chair, maybe I can, uh...
Please, okay.
I think you can consider whichever version you want, and this is something that's on my mind, and we were talking about this, was what you need to do when you, when an edifice is made, is the person making the motion, it would be helpful if they specified which version of the plan they're making a motion about.
All right, that clarifies that. So, um, any discussion here, Commissioners, would you like to discuss this matter?
Madam Chairman.
Thank you.
Talking to the Commissioners, because that's where we are now, just want to bring up some things for you to think about. This section is zoned highway commercial, and all that can go in there is commercial. It was zoned highway commercial in nineteen-seventy-seven. The houses that were built next to it, Island View, were built in two thousand and three. So that was commercial long before they were built. In fact, if you look at ordinances today, the way I interpret them, Island View would have to put in the type A buffer, not the commercial, because the commercial was there first. But that has nothing to do with today, because they're putting in the buffering. We've got lots of emails from people that say, we don't need a Dollar General, therefore, I'll just throw this out, nobody's going to shop there, so we don't have a traffic problem, but we're going to go forward without that, because now we hear people saying they're all going to shop there, so I don't know which is going to be. Now, for what is being, what can go there, let's talk about that a minute, everybody needs to think about this. That is an acre and a half of property. They, the building is taking up less than, taking up about sixteen percent of the property. You could build in there more than that, most likely. Highway commercial, it could be a hotel. Be careful with what we don't, what, what we approve or don't approve. If we turn this down, they could come back with a hotel, they could come back with a restaurant. All those things are possible for that piece of property. Be careful what it is. It is zoned commercial. Now, let's talk about what should it be zoned. In planning and zoning, what do you want to do? You want to have a very good transition from commercial to residential. On one side of this piece of property is commercial. The other side of the piece of property is a long drainage ditch. They're going to put a buffer in. That makes it an ideal break from commercial to residential. Think about that a little bit, it's an ideal spot to break it. It now stops commercial, it now stops commercial on that side of the road at that point. So that is not a spot for residential with a commercial right on one side of it. So that's what it is, and that's what could be, again. What we're looking at, we keep talking Dollar General, truly what we're approving is a retail building. Dollar General is going to be the leasing of that building, and it's going to be built to their specification. There's no guarantee that it will always be a Dollar General, and we need to think about that in any of the things that we approve. We are approving a retail store. We're approving a ten thousand square foot building on sixty thousand square foot of space. Over the last four or five months, I've driven by many Dollar Generals and counted cars. I've never had, seen over twelve cars at a Dollar General. That's not scientific, that's just looking at it. So there may be more than cars there than that. So I'd like to just to think, all to think about, that we're looking at a retail store with Dollar General rent, whether we want it to be Dollar General, or Smiths Five and Dine, or John Jones's Tackle Shack. But also a restaurant could go there. And if you talk about traffic, think about traffic if a restaurant is there. Across the street from that was a restaurant and could be again. So just think about what this is, it's a retail store, and think about what could go there, and is this a better option than some other things that could go there? Something is going there. We can think about that all we want, property rights are there, someone has, they own that property, and they're going to use that property for something. Current, current zoning allows some of those things I've said. Even if we change that to local commercial, it allows almost everything I've said. Today, today, with that highway commercial, a drinking establishment could go there with a special use permit. Just think about that, I'm just telling, just think about what, what we have there. Because it is zoned highway commercial today, and that hasn't changed, and we may change, we may not, I don't know. That discussion is up for later on. So, traffic, six hundred is three hundred in and three hundred out. So basically, you're looking at three hundred different cars going down the road, not six hundred, they count it in and out, so it's three hundred cars up and down the road. Now, next thing is, if you think about a Dollar General, and what, now, now I'm going to go to the Dollar General, you think about a Dollar General, just something for you to think about, I don't know what people will do. Is anybody going to leave their house and go to a Dollar General and go back home? Are they going to the Dollar General where they're already on the road going somewhere else? Is it adding any more traffic to the road? Just something for each of you to think about. I don't think that, I know that nobody from Brunswick's going to drive to St. Simon's to go to a Dollar General. They will drive to St. Simon's to go to some kind of retail store that might be there, or a restaurant that might be there. The Dollar General isn't going to bring any more cars to the island. It may not even add any traffic up and down that road, there's no way to know that until it's done, so that's just something that I'd like you to think about, whether you think, what you think will happen.
Come on, come on, please be respectful.
Ladies and gentlemen, we were respectful for you, and you talk, please do the same for us, we'd certainly appreciate it. We were kind enough to let everybody talk, that didn't have to happen. So these are just some things that I'm suggesting that you think about as you consider this. The biggest thing is think about what can go there compared to this store, which is saving lots of trees. They're taking a few down, but they're way, they only have to have eleven trees according to our current zoning. And I think the number's thirty-seven, fifty-seven. Fifty-seven. It only has to be eleven according to our current tree ordinance. They're doing a much better job of what they're putting here than what is required. Just things to think about as you weigh your decision.
I just want to add, I respect all the information I've received from the residents. But, you know, we're bound by this ordinance, and in the ordinance, it delineates and tells you what type can be in there, and Preston's right, it does not say you can't have this type of retail store because we don't like it or we don't want it. We, we don't even, we can't use that as a reason to say we're not going to have it. There is still capitalism in the country, there seems to be some type of an effort to reduce that and let governments tell you what you can have and what you can't, and I still, I don't subscribe to that at all. But we still have to look at what it says in the ordinance about those types of businesses. Dave, I'm assuming you probably can't have a pornographic sex toy shop in there, I don't know, but I would imagine that's not in the ordinance. You know, you can't say, we can't look at this and say, well, we don't want this type of store on the island, that, that, that doesn't enter my mind at all on this. It's a retail store that happens to be called a Dollar General.
I guess I have to say something.
There you go.
I'm trying to think of where to begin, and I, as a Harvard Business School graduate, I hate to be lectured, but free enterprise system. I, I am, I am very concerned about two major issues in my mind. One is the congestion and traffic. That stretch of Fredericka Road from this site down through that roundabout is the most dangerous section of road in Glen County. You've got cowboys and cowgirls whipping in and out trying to get advantage, you've got elderly people that don't know where to go, you've got tourists that don't know where to go, and you've got bicyclists and pedestrians crossing there all the time. The roundabout is, is, is a nightmare to me, we go back over on the back streets every time we can, which is unfortunate for the people on Broadway, but that, that stretch of road is a dangerous stretch of road, and I don't think we ought to add to the problem. The second point I have is that I totally agree with Preston, this, something's going to happen with this property, and it's going to be a commercial nature. I also agree with Preston, it's going to be a transition property from commercial to not drainage ditches, but established residential districts. A Dollar General store is not a transition development. To have heavy traffic, bright lights, long working hours, heavy trucks, is not the right place for that piece of property. Dollar General has many other places it can go, but this property should not be one. And to answer my, my Commissioners who say we're bound to approve this, we have no option, there's nowhere in the ordinances I see where it says you've got to do this, that, or the other, as far as the site plan. I do see in the zoning ordinances of Glen County, the purpose of this island planning commission, one of which is to protect established neighborhoods from incompatible commercial For that reason, if no other, this application is not in compliance with the zoning ordinances
Well, this is a very awkward conversation in the community, and it's not helped by the confusion brought to us on the part of the applicant, who continues to make changes in their proposal. And that's a process question that I have a lot of experience with, that I plan to, I was offered the opportunity, we can staff to learn more about how it function, and I sincerely look forward to doing that. I've been fortunate to live and make my living in some of the most sought-after, highly-desirable tourism and conference locations in the world. And one thing that's very clear about places like Mar Harbor, Maine, or Freeport, Maine, or Sagittuck, Michigan, is that the community deals with these issues, and they use their collective judgment to come up with the answer for the community for the long term. And in real estate appraisal business, we have a circumstance where a lot of times you're working on the numbers, it's all about the numbers. And you do all of the math, and then you come out with the result, and your spreadsheet or your pencil and paper says, here's what the number is. And then you say, no, that just doesn't feel right. So you go across, here's what you do in this business, you go across the street, and you sit down on the curb, and you look... You go across the street, and you sit down on a curb, and you look at the piece of property, and you try and figure out what is bothering you about the numbers. And then it will come to you. "Yeah, there was just something that math didn't show, show you in a straight-line projection." And so that's how you saw that in that profession. And sometimes it's very simple. "Oh yeah, I forgot about the fact that 17% of the property is non-billable sales, and so I may have to make adjustment for that," or whatever it is. "The next-door property is not as it was recorded," or something. You go there and look at it. In the field of economics, they have a saying for situations like this. Here's what economists say. "Attractive places attract capital until they're no longer attractive." And most of us don't want to see that happen here, including all the businesses that make our living on trading on the character and the qualities that make St. Simon's Island especially in the country. So attractive places attract capital until they're no longer attractive. That's what happens when you get decisions made parcel by parcel without thinking about the bigger picture. So... What was the question? That concept is embedded in the, all of the documents that are set forth for setting out the guidance and, and the mission of this commission. And I've heard all of the, all of the conversation. I, unlike my fellow commissioner here to my view, right, I really appreciate the input from the community. I think it's very thoughtful. If we're going to have a vote later, I might have some additional comments about that, Chairman, Madam Chairman. But as I looked at, at the controlling documents that we're responsible for meeting and the mission that we have, it does not appear that the proposal that I've seen matches those requirements. On the other hand, I grant that the applicant wants to make more changes, but the basic proposal has not changed. It's an economic question. A lot of this is all about economics. It's a free enterprise country. I'm concerned about the impact on existing businesses. I'm concerned about the future of the site of Dollar General, changes its mind in the future. I'm concerned about the fact that the corporation has not even yet decided that it wants to do that, yet it put this community through this exercise. To me, they just have not made the business case for this location, the business case. It's not about NIMBY, it's not by anti-development, it's about the community. I'm concerned about the impact of the public safety and the impact on county-owned, public owned property. And I don't believe that I've seen that they have demonstrated the positive impact for the community. I, I don't know what this commission's going to do, but I'll speak for myself, I would come to say that if the vote is to deny, I don't know, will be, I, I don't believe that that would be an anti-business vote in any stretch of the imagination. Right across the street are at least three vacant commercial sites that have parking already in place. That is, in fact, specifically in the guiding documents for this planning commission. And so, all of the property owners and all of the developers have choices. And a better choice would be in favor of the real estate property values on the entire island. So I appreciate the opportunity to make those comments, and be glad to listen to more discussion.
Does anyone else have any more comments?
I'm going to agree.
Thank you.
Earlier this evening, I said to all of us...
Put some eye cups on, I can hear you.
Earlier this evening, I said to everyone here, "Let us be objective." I further said, "What are we trying to accomplish here on St. Simon's Island?" Initially, how are we going to move forward on this island? Are we going to try to maintain the beauty? Or are we trying, going to try to do some other things? Looking at the building that's taking place, you can't stop progress, but it must be done in a manner that's going to be constructive and beneficial to the islanders as a whole. Not just a select, a select few individuals. Look around. I have seen, in many of these situations, you've seen how I've voted, primarily because of the concern that I hear. Many times I will email and say, "Well, I've got a concern here, I've got a concern there," primarily because I'm concerned about the island as a whole, and the islanders as a whole. We've got to step back and look at, again, at what we're trying to accomplish here. Sure, we're, some of you are in business to make money, I can understand that. But we also have to look at the residents. Once again, I said, "Think about the goals and objectives we have here. If there's something needs to be changed, let's change the zone, from H.C. to whatever."
Thank you. Personally, I, I do not believe that this commission can change zoning unless it is requested by the property owner. I know we can, I mean, in some instances, perhaps, but just to spot zone and say, "Well, we want this, we don't like this property's zoned highway commercial, we'd much rather have it residential." I, I just don't think we have the ability or the authority to do such a thing. What I wanted to talk about is really more site-specific. I appreciate, I wouldn't be on the commission if I also was not concerned about the ambience and the trees and all of that sort of thing, and wanted to have a more managed plan for our community. But I would like to be more site-site specific on, on what we're talking about here. I, I don't think, it, it's great that the developer wants to, you know, work with the county and in terms of the reconfiguration of the road and the utilities and the right-of-way and all that sort of thing. But as I stood on my ground on the Marshall Building, I don't think using county property is appropriate for a site plan, for our consideration. Either your site plan stands on its own two feet, or it doesn't stand. You can't say, "Well, if I were able to change this about county right-of-way, then my site plan would be okay." To me, that's not appropriate. If the county wants to work with a developer on changing right-of-ways and what goes in and what goes out, and what trees get cut on county right-of-way, that's fine, work it out. But not this body, I don't believe, is going to be deciding what to do with the county right-of-way. That is the purview of the Board of Commissioners. With that said, looking at the site, not taking into account their reconfiguration of the road, because as I say, I don't think that's in our, our purview. I, I do commend the, the developer in putting a 55-foot buffer between Laurel View subdivision and the back of their building. A lot of commercial developments would not, in fact, do that. They would build out more and, and cover more of the site. So I commend them for that. I commend them for the reduction, requesting a reduction so that they save more trees. I think that's, that's an excellent effort. I have concerns about the drainage issues, however. There's a drainage pond, but where does it go and how does it affect other properties has some concern for me. I have a lot of concern, they've moved the entrance, the ingress egress, they've moved it closer to the light there on Fredericka. And I've driven that side, I've driven on that side and off that side. You cannot see around the corner who's coming. I play it safe, please, listen. You can't see around the corner who's coming. And to say, "My site's going to be all right if the county right-of-way is changed this way or that way." To me, that's not the way, you look at a site plan, it stands on its own two feet or it doesn't stand. And to me, that's just a blind corner coming around there. If there's a tractor-trailer coming out of there, and those people coming down there on a light, there's going to be an accident for sure. I, I, I'm just, I'm convinced of that. I don't think it's appropriate. They could have at least put it in the middle, I don't know. I think they want, were trying to get further away from Laurel View, so they put it further over toward the commercial side. But to me, they only short the area of the, of the blind, blind spot there. So with that said, also, I'm, I'm not convinced that the swirling around and the gyrations of the trucks in, in the parking area isn't going to crush a few taillights. I, I'm not convinced that that works either. So on that issue, the traffic issue, my understanding from what I have read here is that I think the traffic is going to be increased something to the tune of, it's presented 37%. Not intolerable, certainly more congestion, but not intolerable. But I am concerned about the safety, and I don't think the site stands on its own. Do we have any more comments? Any more discussion? Any questions of staff? Okay. Chair will entertain a motion.
I moved to defer a site plan in West Street.
What?
No, that's not it. Yeah, I, I moved to defer a site plan adding it.
Hold on, hold on, we'll get it, we'll get it.
They're putting up the wrong thing up there.
I think he went to bottom, the bottom line up there.
But it doesn't give a reason why.
Oh, you have to give a reason. One moment, please.
Here we go.
We've waited two months.
That's right. I move to deny site plan application, S.P. 3299. Based upon the findings that the proposed plan fails to comply with the requirements of Section 619.4A.
Which is what? 619.4A?
Those are the site plan provisions.
619.4A?
I'm sorry, this is what the staff gave us.
4A is the reason we came, that we use to judge it all. There's nine reasons there.
Okay. And you got every one of them?
Yes.
He's saying all of them are in violation.
Sir, a second to the motion?
I second.
All those in favor of denying the application for site plan, S.P. 3299, please raise your hand. That's two. Motion carries. You got anything else to make? I have a motion. Second, second, we have the motion to carry.